Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations in the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton PAC and the Trenton Times on January 6, 2024. It was also distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter to executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 168, Recording Devices, requires that we inform those attending this in-person meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is also being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools. As more specifically designated in NJSA 18838.1, sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. In event this statute is amended, the law should take precedence over this by law.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please call the roll?
Yes. Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Betsy Baglio?
Here.
Beth Baron?
Here.
Adam Beerman?
Present.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Mara Franceschi?
Here.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Here.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Can I get a motion for the adoption, for D1 Adoption of Minutes from June 11, 2024? Debbie, second. Brian?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Baglio?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Beerman?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Welcome to this meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. Although it's summer and school's out, there's a lot of work happening here, which we will be going over soon. The Board is also working. At our June meeting, if you missed it, we did authorize Dr. Foster's contract for another year. We received approval from the state to allow her to remain here for another year. Unfortunately, it's only a year. So we realize that it's time now to take the next steps to finding our next superintendent. And so with that, the Board will be meeting on July 29, and we will discuss those next steps. And we anticipate, you know, starting the search at some level in August. So please stay tuned. We'll try to update the community as we go along. We expect there to be focus groups, surveys, and other ways for the community to be involved in the selection of the next superintendent. So that's all I have tonight, Dr. Foster. So I will turn it over to you.
Good evening. Happy summer, everyone. And although many of us relish the summer season for its slower pace, maybe few scheduled events, more time with family and friends, school districts take advantage of this time apart to focus on some deep thinking, reflection, and certainly extended learning for both our adult learners and our student learners. With that said, Princeton offers many rich opportunities for student and adult learning. So I want to just quickly highlight some of the things that are going on this summer. First and foremost, we're offering three formal weeks of Orton-Gillingham training for classroom teachers in grades K through 3, as well as special education and ESL teachers across all grade levels. This comprehensive training aligns with our strategic plan goals of focusing on early childhood education and ensuring opportunity and achievement for all students. Our first session was the very last full week of June, and over 23 staff members attended that first training session. In addition to OG training, we're thrilled to introduce the AI Institute under Dr. Tu's leadership, an initiative aimed at fostering a collective understanding of artificial intelligence. We'll be inviting Board members, PTOC members, staff, and students. This institute will play a pivotal role in shaping district policies regarding AI and providing professional development opportunities to ensure our students are prepared for challenges and opportunities for the future. I think approximately 30 people are registered for the two-day event. Am I correct, or is it even more than that? We have 42. Oh, 42. That's great. And then we're also hosting, again, under Dr. Tu's leadership, a summer institute dedicated to universal design for learning. I think Keisha Smith-Carrington is also leading that. UDL is an instructional approach that promotes inclusivity and supports the diverse needs of all learners. This initiative underscores our commitment to fostering a learning environment that prioritizes wellness, inclusion, and academic success for every student. And again, I think it's approximately 40 members, staff members, who have signed up. Student learning continues as well. We're offering the Jump Start Summer Classes for students in grades K to 5, LEAP Classes for multilingual learners, extended school-year programs for students with IEPs, and various science and math programs at the high school level. These are designated to provide targeted support and enrichment opportunities. And I believe the DLI camp just was completed last week at Community Park. So we're excited for the wealth of learning opportunities available, but we also recognize the importance of rest and rejuvenation for both students and staff. So please, we encourage everyone to take time away from their studies, relax, recharge, and spend time with loved ones. Before we go into Dr. Tu's presentation, I just want to recognize Matt Bolden and his team in the business office, among other things, for securing the PSENG Energy Grant that is on the Board agenda. Matt, can you just give us just a quick?
Yeah, we'll just go over the overview. This is coming about seven or eight months now. We did miss out on the last round of funding, but we got right in on the second day, and were able to get more than 75% of the almost $2.1 million of HVAC and new boy was at the Forum Elementary Schools paid for. So it would have cost us $513,683 for almost $2.1 million of equipment. So it's a great thing. It is funded, you know, through PSENG program. So we're really happy about that, so.
I do want to welcome Dr. Cisostens to the dais here up front. This is her first board meeting. Welcome. Thank you. And now Dr. Tu is going to present the results of the NJGPA, New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment.
I'm going to the podium, Miss Chad. Okay. I can explain what the NJGPA is for the audience watching online and the few folks we have here, as well as the Board. So the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment is the new HESPA. So in 2021, we piloted it across the state in 20, I'm sorry, 2122. In 2223, that was our first round, and then this year is our second year of taking the assessment. It's administered to all juniors, and it is requirement for graduation. What the state does allow us and other districts to do is if a student does not pass the NJGPA, there's an alternative pathway where they could use a qualifying PSAT score, SAT score, ACT score, or other assessments like Accuplacer to receive a passing score for their assessment. Obviously, they still have to pass all their credit-bearing courses and have attendance requirements fulfilled, and then they can graduate. But we really want, as a district who believes in excellent learning opportunities for the majority of our students, to pass the NJGPA. So when Matt opens that up, we'll start going through the results. The ELA component is aligned to grade 10 ELA standards, and math has Algebra I and geometry. So the goal is by junior year, most students have completed those two courses and should be successful at them. So if you have rising seniors, they took this assessment back in March, and the state requires that once we have, excuse me, the formalized results, we have 60 days to report them out to the Board and community. So that's why we're sort of reporting them in July and not waiting until September when everyone's returning. And then next month, we have our ACCESS test results. So Priscilla Russell will be here. ACCESS is the assessment that we provide to our multilingual learners. So that's following their progress from year to year in speaking, listening, reading, and writing domains. So that will be next month. And then, everyone always asks, as soon as we start doing these test results, well, when are the NJSLA scores coming out? Just lots of assessment. NJSLA are, you know, grades 3 through 9 assessments that we do in the spring, usually in May. We only have preliminary results right now in those scores. We don't have finalized results. So those will go out to families. They'll get the score reports in September, and then I will usually present to the Board in October. And during that presentation, we will have AP results as well. We have already received them, but we'd like to bundle them sort of all together, and average ACT and SAT scores as well. So that's the very long testing presentation. Tonight should be short and sweet. So, Matt, you can kind of go down to that next slide if you don't mind. Thank you so much. So here is the clean data. So you can see here on the left hand, the furthest column is ELA and math, and it says number of students tested in the district. We did have one absence, so you can see that we had 397 in math and 396 in ELA, and they will have to make that up. All students must sit for the NJGPA. They cannot refuse or opt out. So that is, sitting is a graduation requirement, as well as passing it or another assessment. So you can see at the state level, 18% of students were not yet graduated, graduation-ready for ELA. We're at 8%. So that means that 92% of our rising seniors passed the ELA component. So that equals about 31 students did not pass that assessment. And then in math... Live session. This is interesting. It's okay.
You can do it at the bottom left, at the bottom right.
Yeah, if you hit the little projector-looking thing next to the minus sign. I was gonna say, you can see that, Mara? Okay. Over one, Matt? Over to the right? Over one more? That one, right there. Hit that.
Bring your glasses next to mine.
Okay. I don't know why it says live, but... And so for math, it's a little cut up, but it's 397 students took the assessment. 18% of our students are not yet graduation-ready for math, and 82% are graduation-ready. So everyone asks that, you know, well, what are the differentials from last year? Like, how did we do in comparison? Because this is the second year of the assessment. So Matt, if you want to swap to the next page. So here's where I pulled the pilot year, 2122. So we were about 20% not passing and 80% passing for math. ELA, obviously, they tweaked it because you can see how much stronger year 1 and year 2, meaning 22, 23, 23, 24, are. So we did go down a point in ELA for graduation proficiency, and we went down three points in math. You know, before we get concerned, we did test almost, I think it was 84 more students this year than last year. This is a bubble class. And when we look at the numbers, that meant 72 students did not pass math over the course of the assessment. But a lot of those students unfortunately did not pass either ELA or math. So there's double dipping there. So when we worked with the counseling team, our supervisor of ESL, our supervisor of Student Services at the high school, we noticed that with IEP waiving, with alternative assessments like PSAT, SAT, ACT, we're down to about 30 students who are not yet graduation-ready. So the good news is that we're already on it. So we're going to talk about sort of next steps of what does that look like, so that we're not waiting until the end of the year. We had about 12 students who couldn't take any other assessments. We weren't able to do Pathway 1, which is the GPA, or Pathway 2, which is those alternate assessments, who did a portfolio last year. All of them passed. So all of them were able to graduate, and that is really to the support of Tiffany Brennan, our math supervisor, Keisha Smith-Carrington, our supervisor of Humanities, Priscilla Russell, supervisor of ESL, and Anna Rose Gable, one of our ESL teachers, who really helped kids and working with different teachers like Toria Esposito and Adiva, and just to have extra sessions for kids to be able to complete the portfolio. And our goal is not just to kind of get them across the finish line, is we also want them to have these literacy and math skills. We want to make sure that when they're leaving us, that they feel like they've mastered this content. So it's not just about graduation, but making sure that we feel that they're graduation-ready. So Matt, if you can go to the next level. So part of the requirements when we're reporting out to the Board and community are we have to present subgroup data. So this is subgroup based on race. So it's a little blurry even for me back here, but you can kind of see some trends. Things that I really want to highlight, and not in a good way, are Hispanic population numbers. That went up 6%. So we never, ever want to see more red than green. We do have a large, recently arrived-in-high-school, multilingual learner Hispanic population. And so what we're doing, and you'll see this in a future slide, is because of our wonderful ESL teachers, we do have a summer program this year specifically working on literacy and math skills that we know will be present in the portfolio process, so that they're getting extra support. And we're trying to make it fun, having swimming lessons as well, and just getting them going. They're not completing the portfolio this summer. They're doing sort of the groundwork, so that come fall, we're going to kind of get them launched and ready to go. So we really, because with COVID, all of this went away. Graduation requirements were waived for time. So we're kind of building the system again to making sure that we're catching these kids and getting them where they need to be at the end of the PPS experience. Our Black student numbers are, you know, are at 26%, I believe, from seeing here. Last year it was 40%. Please know that some of our subgroups are small numbers. So when you have a small N size from year to year, your percentage changes can drastically change. Regardless, we have disproportionality when you're looking across our Asian, Black, Hispanic, and white populations. So our goal is to, as part of the strategic plan, are kids graduation-ready in 9th and 10th grade? What are we doing along the way? And I'm so glad, you know, our principal's here, like, we're on it. We have a team, and we're going to talk about things like Saturday Academy and supporting our staff to support kids along the way. Matt, you can change to the next slide? So this is pretty, oh, go back one, it skipped two. So we have to report out by gender. We didn't have anyone list as non-binary or transgender, you know, otherwise it would be suppressed. So you have about 14% of females not yet graduation-ready, and male, it's pretty steady from last year. There was not much of a change in differential there. You can go to the next one? All right. Now here's subgroup programming. So F/R lunch, our students who receive lunch services. Once again, more red than green. So this means that we need to provide more intensive supports. When we work with Lauren Samara, who's our new supervisor of multi-tiered systems of support, I know, I was on an email today that Cecilia was in contact with her of looking at our INRS processes, looking at our Saturday Academy, looking at our summer programming. How are we providing targeted supports to students who might need a little bit more need? That's how we get that red to go down and that green to go up. Our special ed red actually went down a few percentage points from last year. It's still high, but it did go down. And gen ed in section 504 remains steady. Our students who have a 504 typically do very well on our standardized assessments in Princeton, which is good to hear. Okay. So what are the supports in place? So once again, we really try to leverage alternative pathways, because not every student, especially if, we have a lot of international students. Not every student has mastered all the standards, because they might teach math differently in another country, and they might label it differently literacy-wise. So that's why we have the PSAT, ACT. We go through student by student when they don't pass the GPA and say, what other alternative assessment can we use to leverage? Because they show proficiency in this assessment to help them graduate. And if they have not shown proficiency, what classes, like our plus classes, what supports, like Saturday Academy, pulling kids, you know, during their blocks to get support with a portfolio? What can we do to make sure that they can cross that finish line, but also have those foundational skills so that they can be successful once they leave us? As I shared, we do have the summer programming this year with intense focus of this targeted group of about 20 or so multilingual learners to make sure that they're prepared for that portfolio process. And then we've been working really with the building administration. Cecilia's been really great, and our supervisors at the high school level with our plus classes, having a set curriculum, having an identification process. How do we help kids with targeted supports, using data to inform the instruction? So that place will happen. And then seniors who would be in the plus class, they can complete the portfolio process during the school day. Because as you can imagine, our students are really busy. Our students, you know, they're a captive audience when they're with us, but, you know, they have after-school activities. They have jobs. They don't want to come in on Saturdays or before school or after school to complete a portfolio. And our philosophy is that if the goal is graduation, that should happen during the school day. So having this class in the schedule really helps, and that's in both English and in math. And then we have Saturday Academy to provide that additional instructional support throughout the year. Lauren Friedman, one of our assistant principals and former math teacher, did a lot of great legwork of redoing that program this year and showing data of how this has been really beneficial to students. And so how can we continue that good work? And once again, using the INRS process and different conversations along the school year, get that, get students in those programs earlier rather than as a last resort. You can swap the screen, Matt. So then what are our next steps? So once again, we've been having ongoing conversations. We actually are doing another round of NJGPA for kids who were absent during those weeks this, you know, during that week, so they couldn't make it. Or if they were, the cutoff is 725. Say they got a 720. Like, just come. I know it's summer, but we may be able to, like, get you done through this process so that you don't have to go through a portfolio or an alternative assessment. And then we're beginning the portfolio process once we're ready in September. And then we're looking at trends. So what we've noticed in GPA and in NJSLA is the evidence-based responses. So that's, once again, the reading and writing in the technical subject areas is what it's called in the strands. And that really is the nonfiction informational reading and writing. And this is a great goal for our district, because it really ties into our Portrait of a Graduate. When we talk about critical thinking and informed and involved global citizen and communication, it's about forming evidence-based arguments and resources. And so how these skills tie into the standards are really going to be helpful as we push our Portrait of a Graduate work. And then for math, geometry has been continuing to be a weak area for us in modeling and reasoning. One of the good pieces of feedback, this is at the elementary level, but it does lead us to high school, is that teachers feel like they're able to get through the curriculum with our current school calendar. For whatever reason, historically, elementary curriculum in the materials we use in any district, geometry's the last unit. So what happens at the end of the year? You run out of time. You don't teach geometry. And it builds, and it builds, and it builds. So making sure that our early learners are getting all of the standards is really important. I think us revising our elementary minutes for next year is really going to help with that. And then as well as working with different tiles and different manipulatives, because even big kids can help with the visual spatial relationships and things like that in geometry. And I know Tiffany and some of our teachers have been doing some PD around that work as well. So, you know, it's not, you know, it's good news. I think, like, we're on a good path. I'd like to see growth in next year in 1% and 3% in the opposite direction, but I think it's kind of where we are right now. And we will continue to look at our NJSLA data in October with everybody, and that gives us a little bit more detail, because it's grade-level standards. Here, there's sort of an overview, and it's really hard to target exactly what kids are struggling on or not. Whereas when we look at our geometry assessment for NJSLA, we can really drill down and then extrapolate and say, well, if they're struggling on NJSLA in this topic, we know that they're going to struggle in NJGPA for this topic. So let's make sure that we're closing gaps and moving forward. So I think that's it, except for questions from the Board. Yes, Adam?
It's really what you're doing, just muses here. Do you find that, one, are the tutors, are they becoming that solid object that, and they really get to know their students, and they can see weaknesses and strengths? And then, I guess, my second question is, again, very kind of, it's a muse. Do the students, maybe their ego starves when it comes to academic success? When they do well, do they have self-perpetuating motivation to keep going?
I can give you a quick anecdote. So we've had a lot of success with our Saturday Academy, and we've had kids, like, come to Lauren Freeman and come to the teacher, and like, I got an A on this test. I've never gotten an A in this class before. I got a B on this test. So we know that success breeds success, right? And for whatever reason, particularly in math, there's mindsets of, I'm not a math person. But we would never let someone say, well, I'm not a reading person. I don't do literacy. Like, we have to kind of help change that mindset. And sometimes in high school, it's already firmly established that they're not a good student or whatever. So we want them to experience those small successes, as you're saying, so that they can build and change that identity. And yes, those tutors do become another trusted adult in the building, because they're in small groups with the students, or they're one-on-one with the students. And so they really can see, a lot of times, too, our students sometimes lead very complicated lives. There might be a lot going on at home. They might be working outside of school, and sometimes they just need a little bit more time. And this allows them to have that time and get the support that they need. And they don't want to be embarrassed in front of their peers that they might not be on grade level.
Just a quick second question. I know it's an ongoing process, especially the Hispanic parents. But they're kind of, do they get on board? Do they understand what's going on and what you're trying to do? And are they involved?
We work with liaisons. We have a lot of staff members who speak various languages at home, because we do have a lot of international students from all over the world when they come here. And the American schooling system is, you know, it's complicated. And so what we try to say is, we emphasize, and that's where we really utilize our ESL teachers as a point of communication, our case managers as a point of communication, the seriousness of these assessments and why we need you to come to school, why you need to take it. And then the portfolio, we're saying, like, this is really going to help you in the long run if you're not able to pass this assessment. Because once again, I can't reiterate this enough. It's not just about getting a kid a checkbox. Like, we really want to make sure they have some foundational math and literacy skills before they leave us.
Thank you, Kim, for the presentation, and we appreciate it. And thank you to Keisha Smith-Carrington and Tiffany Brennan for their attention to really drill down. And it seems like math has gotten, like, a little weaker, so hopefully we can pay more attention to that. Because you said, I mean, they're good results, but, you know, you judge a school district by how, you know, the struggling students are performing, and there's work to do there. And so I wonder, speaking from experience with one of my children never passed a state assessment, and, but, you know, did fine on the SATs and college is doing great, and he'll probably run the world one day, but that's it. But he will have the stigma of never having passed, you know, NJSLA. And so I wonder, now, he was special ed, and I wonder if it's because the test just aligns more closely to the standards, and so children who aren't receiving the same curriculum, right, are missing that? Or do we think it's something else?
Oh, I mean, I think each individual case is unique. I mean, I'm not going to speak for your son, but do students take it more seriously, the SAT and the ACT? Do you know what I'm trying to say? Like, they might, and what I mean seriously, do they do like a workbook or a test prep book? Or do they get a class? So they're learning how to access that specific assessment. Whereas here, like, the goal is we teach the standards, right, and kids have access to them. And then there might be test prep in the sense of, here's how you navigate the menu, here's how you respond.
So that's a great point, right? So test-taking is a skill.
Yes.
Are we teaching that?
Yeah. Well, yes and no. I think there's different tests. So the answer is, it depends. We should be explicitly, how do I get this? In the age of AI, right? Yeah. I think there's different skill sets that need to be taught, and kids should be able to be able to do fill-in-the-blank, multiple-choice, short answer, long answer. And that's actually in the updated standards, where they're saying in ELA standards, it shouldn't just be these long essays, which are important, but also there should be short bursts of writing, so that kids can get immediate feedback on their work. So I think we could do a better job of logic and teaching kids, like, let's look at the four choices, like, what makes the most sense. But it's not as formal as you would be with, like, you know, a Princeton review or, you know, like, some things like that.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's something that we, I'm serious. It's a skill. And if not all kids are getting access to that skill, that's an equity issue. So I hope that's something, like even on a Saturday, if we had a test prep.
Yep.
And sometimes you're more, once you see it, you're more familiar with it.
We do have it in the summer. Yeah.
You have test prep?
SAT.
No, 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 but I mean for the, for the state assessments. That, but maybe that would help with the scores, right? Because people, like the kids, by the time they take the SAT, they've seen it a couple of times, right? Because we administer the PSAT.
Do the PSA T.
Twice for free in our schools. I just wonder if there was a preview, if our scores would go up. Anyway, Susan.
Hi, can you speak a little to the portfolio? Like what kinds of work is in the portfolio? And how are they demonstrating that they learn these skills that maybe the test didn't enable them to demonstrate?
And so the portfolio is, is actually really interesting. It's open-ended task. So they say you need a constructive response task in this standard about geometry. And we have the autonomy, I guess for lack of a better worm, a word, to select the kind of task. The state does provide examples that you can use, but they do not require you to use those type of examples. And then the teacher will teach into the skill. Then the student will complete the open-ended tasks or like a few problems per standard. And then the supervisor will grade it. So the teacher does not grade the assessment. Tiffany or Keisha will grade the assessment. And the same thing for reading and writing. There's certain strands, and there's like a non-fiction reading and a response, a writing response. And so when they say it's a portfolio, it's not like a huge binder. But it, there's several tasks that need to be completed. And what we try to do is really do intensive spurts of teaching these specific skills, do the task. Teaching the next set of specific skills, do the task. So that it's fresh in kids' minds and that they can be successful as much as possible. And then what we do is we say to state, Kim completed the portfolio, she got this much out of 10. And then we keep it on file. So we do not submit to the state anymore. We used to have to drive them to Trenton and submit. But there's so many thousands across the state. Basically, it's part of our CUSAC auditing process now. If they say, Kim, you had 12 kids complete a portfolio last year, where's all their work? Where's the sheet? We submit a statement of assurance to the state with the name of the kids, their student ID numbers and their scores.
So in theory, they could audit you to say, like, show us three kids randomly, and you would have to show how they passed.
We can't just say, here's a math problem. Like, it is very structured. Yes.
Thank you for this. This is really interesting. I have a couple of questions. First, how many sort of late arrival multilingual learners do we have roughly per year? Like what, how big a group is that? And then my second one is, how many kids go to Saturday Academy? Like, that's the first time I've heard about this program.
Sure.
Who teaches it? And then finally, I'd just like to put in a plug for including, sort of weaving in more reading and writing practice, not just in the high school, but also in the middle school curriculum, where I think there could be more opportunities for reading books and writing different kinds of materials, just to get the kids to have more practice. Because if you only do, like, read one book in a semester or write one piece in a semester, even if it's a well-chosen book or assignment, it doesn't, you could, you could do more, right? And you could even write in science class or social studies class. You could do that kind of evidence-based writing.
Oh, yeah, it should be across the containers. And that's something we definitely need to work on. So agree. So I'm going to answer your first question vaguely. So it depends on the year, I would say, like 15 to 20s new arrivals. Like, it fluctuates. Yeah. We have about 80 MLLs on a given year at the high school. And then it's a lot of interrupted learning. So they, they are newly arrived, some of them are alone. Some of them are the parrot for their family. And then they might have had very limited formal education before they come. So our job is not just to get them to graduate. And remember, with special education, you can have until 21 to graduate. But when you're a multilingual learner, you only get one additional year in high school, no matter what year you arrive. You know, so there's not as many legal protections for MLLs. And then Saturday Academy, I'm going to look at Cecilia again. How many? Which is great. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for this. It's always really interesting. And, and as you said, we do have a lot of work to do. I love that you're, that the teachers are really going through the topics that we know students are struggling with at sort of all levels. Are any of them being asked to, or any teachers maybe on their own, doing their annual plans based on the standards that we know students are struggling with?
That's a great question. So I'm not in the APP or APR meetings, but I sometimes observe supervisors who are leading that. And I can say, I was in a high school English teachers APP meeting this year. And they were talking about having a common rubric across, you know, ninth grade English, let's just say. And utilizing language in the rubric that mimic the standards that, exactly. And so I love hearing the words "common" because that means kids have a consistent experience, no matter, you know, what, what teacher they have. And then it's leading to this ultimate goal that it's standards-based. So I, like I said, I can't speak to everyone. I can ask the supervisor about that, no problem. But I know it's definitely a thought process for some of our teachers. Thank you.
Just another muse, when I was in, I went to Princeton High. I remember like the Haitian kids came and some Chinese kids. They got together and they did their own peer-to-peer study groups. And it really built cohesion at the same time. It really, they reinforced each other. And there's been some studies, I don't know how valid they are, that this is really helps, you know, with getting up to grade level. Is there any way to, again, just a thought, a muse, to encourage to that group cohesion?
Are you talking about like language group, like affinity group?
Just different groups that came in, some that didn't do traditionally well. And I mean, I remember even going back to in Princeton history, the WeatherSpoons School for Colored Kids, they got together in, in groups and did their own self-study. And there's just been, there's been studies about that, how that helps improve grades.
We do have peer tutoring, you know, through our IDEA Center. And, and so that's been really helpful. But we find that kids, it's more like, I have a pre-calc test coming up and I just need like a little boost. I don't know if we have as much as what you're saying, like a consistent like cohort model. But our kids are always looking for leadership opportunities. So maybe we should, if they're looking for some ideas, and maybe when we have our new board reps, that's something we can say. Because I, I love the idea of peers helping peers. Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's hard to do. Don't get me wrong, but.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Kim. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Dr. Foster, we're trying to talk to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tu. I just want to highlight two things. The first is our Princeton Public Schools 24-25 calendar. It's back on again. We had just two slight changes. But I, so I think we left off the March 17th, early dismissal day for the in-service for staff development. But while I have the mic, I do want to just highlight that, again, December 23rd, which is a Monday, we are having school. It's an early dismissal. But we are returning, you know, that week. So I just want families to be prepared. However, we're continuing to work with our Board of Elections and legislators. And if we can get the voting out of two of our schools, then we might be able to change something. So stay tuned, but we'll, we'll continue to work.
Dr. Foster, so one comment, the fifth will not be changing.
The fifth will not be changing this year because it is a presidential election year.
It's coming. It's coming. So we have some work to do and we can maybe get the third.
Yeah, we'll take the third. We'll take the third.
All right, yeah, I'll share some more. But yeah, the fifth is.
Well, it'll be, it'll be good data to see how many people vote in person during a presidential election, right?
Yeah, correct. And we, we do have data from the last primary. So, but hopefully, as I said, we, we have some alternative locations for anyone that's listening. We have quite a list. And we'd love to give our schools back to an instructional day on, on those primary and election days. And then if you will notice also, the 2025-26 draft is up for review. It is not to be approved yet, but we thought we would post it to let you take a look at it. So that any feedback, we welcome. And then we'll make a recommendation at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Dr. Foster, thank you. Can we post this on the website just so people, as a draft, just so people could take a look at it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. Foster, if anyone in the community has any comments on this, who should, should they reach out to?
I'm, I, I will be happy to receive them.
You'll take the calendar emails.
Calendar, yes, exactly.
I think it's great to post it on the website. My suggestion might be, I don't know, a clarifying language that we understand that this, I don't know if you can fit that, but that, you know, that this one day is a little awkward and it's because of XYZ.
No.
No, you don't want any clarifying language?
Like, what do you mean?
Oh, the, the.
25-26.
Yeah, but the Christmas break there also, did it not?
Yeah, it is. January 2nd is another early return. It is a Friday. You know, that may not be the most ideal. But again, our goal is always to embed snow days. And we want to end before Juneteenth because there are two holidays. One, the state recognizes, and one that the country recognizes. And so that's our goal. But again, if we get voting out of the schools, that's another opportunity. We will do, those are the two days we are going to give back.
So it may be helpful if that's posted on the website to indicate that, 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 that day would be given back, should we get, perhaps, you know, that's what I meant by clarifying language.
But also maybe subjects change.
Yeah, it's a draft.
Yeah, it's a draft.
How do other districts handle Juneteenth?
The, most districts, and, and here's what is tricky. Most districts actually avoid both the state-recognized Friday, right? It's always the third Friday in June. But many communities have activities and events on the national Juneteenth day. So most school districts try to avoid both of those days for school. I believe Hopewell had off and then had to come back like that next week.
West Windsor next year for 25-26, they, they have off and they've come.
And they come back in the following week. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Okay, moving on, we have our first public comment on any item that you would like to discuss with us or talk to us about. And we had this lined up and we have one person, Jaclyn Fusaro. So please come on up. You have three minutes. Please just say your, your name and the street you live on.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Jaclyn Fusaro. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the middle school schedule. Because in the fall, we're, we're planning on taking away both pause. And also, well, not taking away entirely pause, but every four days it'll meet now. And we're also planning on taking away recess. And I understand that this is because you are concerned about the test scores, which also I've seen and I'm also concerned. But I also, in looking at that, we've spent a lot of time talking about the math curriculum and how under the previous chair, the pre-algebra curriculum did not cover important pre-algebra topics. The Algebra I course for the entire first marking period was in fact pre-algebra, which meant that seventh graders taking that course only had three quarters to take and learn all of Algebra I, which was just too much for these students. So it's not that surprising to me that those scores were low. We also have a concern in terms of the LA scores for economically disadvantaged and culturally diverse students. And also there, I think the most important thing we need to do is look at the curriculum because we're also using Lucy Cawkins in terms of our ELA curriculum. And I think that's something we need to look at because 15 states have banned her work. And that's because of the fact that it tends to work a lot better for students coming from more advantaged communities because they get more exposure at home. And the Lucy Cawkins model is basically, it assumes that if kids get enough exposure, they'll figure out syntax and, and reading and literacy on their own. And that doesn't work for all children, which is why we've struggled in districts that use her model. I, I taught in the New York City Public School System. And we had kids who came in who used, one of the things they taught the kids was just to read the pictures. And some kids adopted that as their primary mode of literacy. And for those children who did that, they, they never really learned how to interact with the language and, and the content. And we had to actually just cover up the pictures and, and teach them to, to look at the words, to force them to look at the words. We don't use her, her reading curriculum, which is very good. We have a very strong literacy curriculum in terms of reading. But we do use her writing, which is something that I think they're piloting a new program for next year and working on that. But I think we should work on that before we take away lunch and, I'm sorry, before we take away recess, is, is improving the curriculum. And also, one significant concern is that the time is not going where I think we all assume it is. Of the five core content subjects, they're only gaining 65 minutes each week. But the four EPs plus health, racial literacy and homeroom are actually gaining 91 minutes each week. And, and I can show you where the time is going.
Thank you.
So the current E-Day schedule has 43-minute periods, which compared to next year's proposed schedule is only one minute fewer per class and 13 more minutes of lunch and recess. Homeroom is reduced from the current proposal of seven minutes to just two. And free play and recess is incredibly important because it allows students to grow cognitively, engage in problem-solving and risk-taking, and can reduce anxiety. And that's really important now because so many kids are having mental health issues and we need to support these kids. In 2001, the Council of Physical Education for Children and National Association for Sports and Physical Education recommended that PA classes not be replaced by unstructured playtime for recess. And this is a group of physical education teachers who said, we don't want to see Jim replacing recess. So I think that's important to consider. And then the other issue is, I know for my son, if you give him a combined lunch recess, he's just going to eat out of a vending machine. And he's going to just run outside and play. And I think we're going to see a lot of kids do that. And that's going to be a huge issue. I know one other problem is that the outdoor recess is canceled a lot. But I think we need to look into that because we call that at 35 degrees, which, there's one school district in Minnesota that calls it at minus 15 degrees. I don't think we need to go that cold. But I think there's somewhere in between that.
That's a different ilk up there.
Right, right. I don't think our children are that hardy. But I think we could be a little bit more, well, we could keep more recess. The other issue is, please consider that we're talking about reducing pause to every four days. They're also taking away the pause passes. So the kids have to stay in the pause class. But we're doing that at the same time that we're reintroducing tracking in mathematics. And the problem is, before, the students could use their pause classes to go to their math teachers and learn the curriculum. So what's going to happen? And my concern is that we may see students who are not able to get out of the lower-track math classes. Now, I'm not telling you have to keep pause because I understand the concerns with that, that not all children are using their time effectively. So there's a lot of other options. There are online programs in which can support students in learning pre-algebra independently. And then also, maybe there's also the possibility of having an EP for the students to work together collaboratively to learn the mathematics that aren't in their core class, the lower-track math class, if they want to move up to Algebra I the next year. So I, I think we just need to look into alternatives if you want to get rid of pause or at least the ability to leave pause to go help, get help with the math teacher. Because otherwise, I think the students are going to get stuck in their original tracks. And I don't think any of you are going to be happy with that if that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Tu, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm not sure if we talked to Mr. McCann and Mr. Burr.
I did speak to Mr. Burr, yes.
Because I did a lot of, you know, work, presented on this. I do want to speak to your ELA concerns.
Right.
I hear you. We're well, much very well aware.
Right.
We are piloting K5 ELA programs now here. To move away, we have currently supplemented with Orin Gillingham.
Right.
Explicit reading instruction. And then we would pilot 6-8 the following year because our K5 solution might have a 6-8 solution piece. So we want to kind of roll it up. So we're very much aware of those concerns. And then are utilizing things like, oh my gosh, I'm totally blanking on the program right now. But there's an explicit writing instruction program that we're training our AIS teachers and some other things so that students have some explicit writing instruction.
Right, right. So that's, that's what they need. But I, I'd hope to see the curriculum changes coming because the math is being fixed next year. So it seems like it's a little bit concerning that we're taking away recess instead of waiting for the curriculum to be fixed first and seeing if that solves some of our problems. So that's my concern.
One thing, when we were working with Mr. McCann and Mr. Versa Police, that helped, Dr. Foster, one of the things that they also wanted to do with the schedule was the static. They wanted it static because of the drop in rotation. It was a lot of exact getting functioning issues and things like that. And they were trying to maximize staff and class size because there's only so many minutes in the day. And we weren't fully utilizing staff so that they can teach six periods.
Right.
So we know that no schedule is perfect.
Yes.
And I, I hear you with that. I was a middle school teacher. I understand that those kids need to move. They, they need that teen impression time. And so we have had conversations behind the scenes with the middle school of saying, listen, let's see how this homeroom works out. Because if you don't need seven minutes, maybe you need three minutes or whatever. Can we add that to lunch? You know, can we tie some label room? I, I, we joke, if we keep them till five o'clock, which parents say, please do it. We get everything in, but we can't get everything in. So we know that there might be an evolution and some tweaking that has to happen along the way. But we know that pause has been a concern and that lunch, shortened lunch recess blocks.
Thank you. We appreciate your sharing your concerns with us. Thank you. All right, there is no one, just for the people watching at home, there is no one else in the public that is not a school district employee. So, and I don't know if you have any, does anyone want to comment, anything on your mind? No? Nothing? Okay. So moving on, we have harassment, intimidation and bullying. And then we have H2, harassment, intimidation and bullying hearing. Could I get a motion, please? Beth, second. Betsy?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Bierman?
We voted on what we talked about.
Yes.
Oh, oh, no. Respectfully, no.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Abstain.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Abstain.
Susan Kanther?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Uh, moving on now, uh, we have board committee highlights. Wow, that went fast. Yes, and so I will, um, who, uh, the equity is going to be with, the equity reporter's going to be with Debbie Bronfeld.
Thank you. The Equity Committee met on Zoom on Wednesday, July 10th at 6:00 PM. The focus of our meeting was a presentation by Lauren Samara, the district's new supervisor of MTSS and Special Projects. Lauren spent the past 20, I'm sorry, 2023-24 school year as the elementary interventionist, which was a state-mandated role due to Princeton's disproportionality classification of Hispanic students with a specific, uh, learning disability. Lauren shared her work throughout the year, which included such innovations, innovation, innovation, wait a minute, initiative, sorry, as an IMSE soundwall, a shift from a traditional INRS model to a data team model at JP and Littlebrook and high-impact tutoring for students. The board is grateful for Lauren, and she will continue to look at all the data provided and support students to improve their achievement. Our next equity meeting will be September 9th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Uh, next up is long-term planning with, um, Beth Baron. Hi, Beth.
Hi there. Good to be here.
Nice to have you here.
Thank you. Back from Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Um, we met, uh, long-term planning met on the 11th at 4:30 PM, and we talked about the fact that we have filed the projects, the growth, the growth and capacity projects are now filed with the state, and we look forward to hearing comments back and moving forward with those. We are targeting a January 28th referendum date. We're doing our best to make that. If, if it could, it does slide, it slides, but we're doing everything in our power to make that happen. Um, and we were very happy to hear about that from our architects and from our administrators. They have also been meeting with the municipality, talking about how the, um, getting onto the planning board's schedule and making sure that the municipality is, um, kind of coordinating with us as we move forward to move these projects along. Um, we had to check in quickly on the playground projects. There's a Phase One and a Phase Two. Phase One being done this summer and Phase Two to come in, in next year, given that there are longer lead times on those approvals, some of them even the Canal Commission and other things like that that take some time. Um, and we hope to have more information specifically on which ones will be done this summer, uh, soon. Um, and then we spent the bulk of our time talking to the, um, uh, communications firm that we have, uh, secured, the Laura Bishop Group, in order to help us with the growth referendum projects. And we are looking forward to speaking with them again on the 14th of August to talk through more specifically the timeline for how we communicate things and how we develop our messaging and to make sure we have basic information on the projects available to the public, um, in August with, in connection with the orientation and the coming back to school. Um, so we look forward to kind of working with that firm. We were very pleased with their help in the previous referendum, and we felt that they gave very clear and simple materials that explained things to the public. So, um, we're very happy to have them helping us again. And we, again, meet in, on the 14th to talk about communications. And on the 15th at 4:30 PM, we will have another meeting to talk about the projects and other, uh, planning issues.
And is that open or, uh, closed?
Closed.
Closed. Um, can I ask you a question about the, are you finished?
Yes.
Yes. The referendum for January 28th, um, could you just explain, uh, why, um, I think the state only has a certain number of days that we can put a referendum out?
Correct. There's, Matt, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, September, uh, November, the general election, December, um, January and March. So there's statutory dates. The state has on occasion, so it's the fourth, uh, Tuesday in January, which this year happens to be the 28th.
Yep.
Uh, the state has on occasion changed those dates, uh, but it's usually stuck to the, um, the statutory date.
And, and that we're being driven to those dates through the fact that we're in the, with the state now, the projects are with the state. The state reviews them. They also receive comments from the planning board from Princeton. And so it takes 90 days to hear back, uh, and then we have to address those comments and it will.
That was my next question. So the planning board, I under, is the, has that been set? Are we on the, uh, agenda yet?
We're working through that.
Yep, okay. And that's a courtesy hearing or do they have any?
Courtesy hearing. They have 45 days to, to comment on our projects once they're submitted. I believe it's 45 days. And if there are no comments, they, they move forward no matter what, but they have the option of giving some comments to the state so that we can consider them.
Okay. All right, well, sounds good. Please keep us posted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on now to operations with Susan Kanner.
Hi, we met on July 2nd at 8:00 AM. In open session, we were updated on both, uh, work happening on, for the 2022 referendum and the 2023 referendum this summer. Uh, Matt and his team are overseeing such a vast number of projects that I can't even make this report short, so. It includes roofing at PHS, PMS, JP and Riverside. There's also smaller HVAC projects going on in the elementary schools, and clearly weather like today demonstrates how important these projects are to the district. Other projects we received updates on included, uh, the security door and handles in our, in our middle school and high schools, security, the security vestibules of PHS, the PHS cafeteria, upgrades at the PMS pool. Um, and then non-referendum work includes, uh, the PHS training room renovation. We also went over, um, a fire, the fire alarm, uh, maintenance contract, which is on the agenda for approval tonight, and the JP cell amplifier contract, which is also on the agenda for improvement to not, for approval tonight. In sustainability, as we always discuss in every meeting, uh, we discussed, um, energy efficiency school competitions that took place this year and how to expand those competitions for next year to more schools. And congrats to the Littlebrook School for their win this year. We also touched, we touched on, uh, solar, which is on the horizon, and additional sustainable New Jersey applications that Jenny Ludmer has submitted, uh, on behalf of the district, and we're waiting to hear back on those. Um, the meeting actually had a lot more topics, but keeping it short. Um, our next meeting is August 14th at 8:00 AM, and it is open to the public.
Thank you, Susan. Can I ask you a question?
Just had two quick notes. Um, one is, um, there are a record number of projects.
Can I say no? No, go ahead.
And, um, I think five to six, five or six different contractors who are working here this summer. So New Road Construction is providing two full-time, uh, project managers who are here onsite every day with more on call as needed. And I just wanted to offer special thanks to, uh, Matt, uh, Dave Harding, um, the architects and many other people, um, who are working on behalf of the district to get everything done, um, as quickly as possible.
Okay. Do you have a second? Because I had a question, but you said you had two points. Was that it?
That was both of them.
That was both of them. Okay. So, yeah. So my question is, when, uh, we come back in September, what, what's going to change? What's going to be finished? And I did listen to everything, but it was too much.
What's going to be finished?
Yes.
Well, hopefully everything.
No, 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 I'm just, I mean, uh, of course, I'm not.
So there are always, uh, with construction projects, yes.
Yes, I know.
As you're losing to a lot of contingencies.
I mean, we look forward to the cafeteria at PHS, which will be a huge.
We anticipate a beautiful cafeteria at the high school.
Okay.
Um, the vestibule, the security vestibule at the high school so that.
Both in the front and the back of the school.
Great.
Uh, new roofs?
New roofs.
At, at the high school?
New roofs in four different schools they're doing, um, so that we'll be ready to begin in earnest our quest for solar. HVAC work, so there'll be certain places that have had poor circulation of air that will have better, you know.
Yep.
Offices and, and spaces that will have, um, that. We will have, um, a updated training room so that, that, one, it provides, uh, some classroom space that was needed and allows, uh, the training team to work, uh, on the students in a much, uh, safer and better manner. So we're excited for the changes.
And the pool, what do we expect?
Uh, the lighting is being worked on. I, um, you're doing some maintenance on the pool itself, and then I think you are working on the, um.
We're looking at starting blocks. Um, the vendor that's chosen has one representative in this country, um, and they're having trouble getting their, uh, New Jersey Business Registration Certificate, so.
Are those the ones that use the Olympic trial?
The Omega product, yes.
Yeah, okay.
From Switzerland. So we're working on that.
That's our luck.
And then some other, you know, ancillary work around the pool, uh, maybe resurfacing the pool deck.
Yeah, while the pool was empty, they thought they would try to do some updates to make.
That, that sounds good. And, um, Cecilia Burge, who the high school principal is in the audience tonight, please invite us for a grand opening of the cafeteria. And, um, we'll check out.
With new food service?
The new food service, and we would like to check out those vestibules as well, and maybe the roof. So, yeah, that's great. But of course, there's always delays and we won't be angry, like the time the elevator didn't work, remember? We're not, we understand these things happen. So, uh, but that's really exciting. That's a lot of work going on. Yeah.
No, I remember the elevator inspector came out on, uh, Tuesday after Labor Day.
Yeah.
It's very hard to make them move.
Yes, I know.
But it's truly an unprecedented amount of work being done in this district this summer.
Yeah. So good job. So, so Beth, Brian, Susan, Debbie, Mara, thank you, uh, for, you know, being the board stewards on this and keeping a close eye. Um, and I had one question on the playgrounds. Phase One.
And Adam.
Um, oh, and Adam, I'm sorry. Um, Phase One of the playgrounds, what does that entail? So when the kids come back in September, sorry.
Only Matt.
What's that? Yeah, we're still, um, you know, we're still working with our engineers. Um, we're, Sue, there's a lot of moving parts with the playgrounds.
No pun intended.
As we know. Um, we're hoping to, uh, redo the Gaga pits ahead of time, but we're, you know, so we don't know what we don't know, right? So there are a lot of costs, so that's why we're using engineers to figure out.
Yeah.
What, um, can be repaved, what can, you know, what the costs are. But you don't know that until you actually do core samples in the, um, you don't just throw down asphalt, right? There's layers and layers below there. So, you know, you hope to do it and it lasts for 20 years, not five years.
Yes.
We've all seen various places where they just put down asphalt poorly. So, um, you know, it takes.
My driveway.
You, you had a bad, okay. That's not good. Got to get it sealed every, what, three years?
We don't like the ceiling. It makes it slippery. We don't seal. It's part of the bylaws.
Just trying to help. I would get it sealed. I'm trying to get my driveway sealed. Where are we going with this?
I just want to know, so, uh, there's a lot of work going on. I just wanted to know, um, come September, you know, what are, what are families and parents going to see that's changed? I understand, it sounds like a lot.
We hope. We're working on it.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, moving on now. Wait, oh, personnel with Debbie.
Thank you. Uh, the Personnel Committee met on July 9th. We discussed leave of absences for the 24-25 school year. We discussed a streamlined organizational chart for the district, which is still being updated. We discussed a few job descriptions, and we discussed new hires for the 24-25 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Um, next up, policy with Beth.
We met on July 2nd, and we talked about the class size, uh, policy that is on the agenda for First Read tonight. Um, this is an important policy that we have been talking about for quite a while because we would like to let the community know what we're targeting and what we're aiming for, particularly as we do the growth projects, so people understand what we would like the, the class sizes to be. That said, we can't always control them, and there are times where that, we will not be able to achieve those, but we are definitely, you know, our administrators are targeting this as a policy. Um, we also talked about preparation for a meeting with the LD-16 representatives, which I can talk about at the end of this very briefly. Um, and we, it was a light meeting, um, and we look forward to, at our next meeting on August 14th, talking about, um, the Strauss-Estevez policy update that we received. We get these periodically. They come from the service that helps us with our policy manual, and they make, uh, they show us what is on legally and, um, based on case law, you know, recommended and required that we update in our entire manual. So we'll be starting on another big batch of those next time. So that was, that was our meeting. So our next meeting's 8:14. Um, and then I can briefly speak to the legislative, um, meeting. So we have, as a, as a, as a district, uh, made an effort to meet with our LD-16 representatives, Representative Fryman, Drewless and Zwicker. And so we succeeded after a number of months of back and forth and getting an audience. We had about half an hour with them, and we do hope to repeat this again. But we wanted to share with them kind of unique issues to our district, many of which we do share with other districts in the state. We wanted them to hear our perspective on things. We spoke to them about, um, our financial situation and the impacts of the 2% cap and some of the particular things that are difficult, where we are required to only increase our operating revenues by, or our operating budget by 2% year to year, but we have things like the charter school costs and charter school tuition and our special education outplacement rates, which just go up with no cap, with no, no bearing on, on any sort of restriction and, and with inflation. And we also have transportation costs, so it's very difficult for us to be managing our, our, our budgets moving forward. We wanted them to hear specific issues that hit our, hit our pocketbook. And we also explained to them the unique, uh, situation in Princeton where we have residential taxpayers shouldering a large portion of the burden. We don't have the commercial ratables other districts have. We have many large nonprofits. So we, we wanted to emphasize again that even in Princeton, where we seem to be doing quite well, and we've been very fortunate to be making our budgets every year, unlike neighboring districts, we still feel the, the, the pinch. And they're working on that this summer in terms of main, um, changing the funding formula. So we wanted them to hear from us. And Dr. Foster spoke to them about a number of curricular, curricular issues, including unfunded mandates like the HIB, things that are important and we think help students, think help students, but we have no funding that's been given to us to implement them, to have training, to have PD on things. We've been required to revise both our ELA and math curriculum over this summer, two significant course areas that require extensive work in the summer. I know that West Windsor Plainsboro estimated it will cost them $300,000 to do it this summer. That's due by September, and there's been no sense that anyone's going to waive any of these requirements. We have a lot of social, emotional learning requirements that are unfunded, and we are working on this voting in school, and we explained to them how that significantly impacts our school calendar. And we also mentioned to them the teacher shortage and tried to suggest a few simple things that might help, like making certifications more flexible and helping with reciprocity, saying that people who have certifications in Pennsylvania and New York should be able to teach in New Jersey and vice versa. And there's some simple things that they can do. But unfortunately, at the state level, there's a lot of politics, and there's a lot of complexity, and so they have trouble passing legislation. And they do not have any sort of, and we, we have a strategic plan in this district. We have annual goals. We all know we're moving in the same direction. When you look at the state level and the Department of Education and the legislature, there is no strategic plan. There is nothing. We have no guidance, no leadership, and no help with things like AI and other, other major initiatives that 600 districts in the state should be given some guidance. So we kind of really talked their ear off in the half hour.
Coming all in.
And we hope to do it again in a couple months. So it was a good first meeting. It was very positive.
And, and, you know, thank you for your efforts in organizing that meeting, and also our good friend Jean Durbin for her efforts. And it's, you were on vacation and you find time to do all this. And so just, your commitment is inspiring.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
And can I add that you keep, you keep plugging away? Because, yeah, there's a lot of politics in the state government. They have a lot of conflicting issues. You know better than I do.
Right. But I think it's important to hear from us as individual districts, and they know we're their constituents. And when they introduce legislation we don't agree with, they need to know, you know, they should check with us. We have very experienced educators ready to speak, and we emphasize that. So.
So thank you for your efforts.
Oh, it's difficult, but do we, are you like a lobby, you kind of like are de facto lobbyists, do you think, from the board? No?
No, I'm not a lobbyist. I do-
It would help.
I do, in a personal capacity, sit on the Garden State Coalition of Schools. We belong to that, and I help on the executive board there. So I'm able to bring back what I'm learning and try to share it with my colleagues.
You always do.
And in policy, we talk about advocacy in every meeting, and policy meetings are open to the public.
Oh, they're archived, too. You can watch it, too.
Yeah. Policy meetings are not filmed.
No, no, but NJ SBA archives a lot of information, and New Jersey Spotlight, but that's another story. You can find out a lot of information quickly.
All right. Well, we'll pick this up next month. All right. Thank you, Beth. And last, but not least, student achievement with-
Very quick report. A lot of what we spoke about was already spoken about in other committees. We met July 12th at 11:00 AM on Zoom. We spoke about the calendars that Dr. Foster mentioned are on our agenda this evening. And we do invite the public to, to weigh in on the 25-26 calendar, as Dr. Foster said, until our August meeting. Lauren Samara and Mickey Christofoli came to our student achievement meeting, as well as our equity meeting about the disproportionality report that Debbie spoke about. We spoke about option 2 and some changes specifically for high school students for health and PE, actually not health, just PE. And so parents, just stay tuned for more information about how to engage the option 2 process, if that's important and the right decision for your child.
Could you just explain briefly what option 2 is?
What option 2 is? That means that a student takes part in athletics in some capacity. The state does mandate, how many minutes, Kim, 150?
150.
Per week. And that is the only subject that is mandated. There's a number actually mandated by the state. And so we have an ability, almost every school district does, I think. But we have an ability for students who do meet that out of school or even with our in-school sports in the afternoon, to be able to, there's some paperwork involved, but option 2 will give them some free time during the school day to do some, do some work. And then we talked about the class size policy, which we spoke about in policy. So a lot of these topics went to student achievement. Our next meeting is August 16th at 11:00 AM. We hope you join us.
Thank you, Betsy. So now moving on to policies for First Reading, J1, and it's that policy that both Beth and Betsy mentioned. And for people at home, please take a look at it, and we would welcome your comments. So you can write to Beth with any comments you might have on the policy. Yeah, because we're interested. We've, over the years, we've heard a lot, we used to have a policy that had the class size numbers. We took it away once the enrollment was growing and space wasn't. But now we've re-implemented it. And so we do want to hear from the community if it's, if they're aligned with what you think they should be. Moving on now to personnel, K1 resignations. And I just want to say, we have two, two staff members resigning that taught my children, or were staff members, Jackie Katz, biology teacher, and Corinne Centarpia. And both, you know, really made an impact. Jackie Katz, you know, we wish her all the best. She took a job as a supervisor in another district, and we just wish her all the best. Next up is appointments. Then we have transfer reassignments for retirements. Sorry? What? Oh, sorry. K, personnel items. K6, leave of absence. K7, substitutes. K8, abolishment of job description. K9, curriculum and instruction. K10, student services. K11, six-period compensation. K12, comprehensive equity plan. K13, athletic appointments. Moving on now to curriculum and instruction. One, grant application acceptance.
Can I say something?
Yep.
So I just, I keep forgetting to kind of say this in the public. We get funds, another unfunded mandate for our district is, because we have so many private schools in our district, we, as the public school, have to do a lot of paperwork for them. And this is one of them. So we, as a district, collect the money, do some paperwork, send it out, da-da-da-da. But again, it's an unfunded, it's not a mandate. I don't, oh, it is, okay. An unfunded mandate. And we do it with their textbooks, and we do it with technology and just all their stuff. So all title funds. So again, we are the only public school in Princeton. But again, it's more work on our staff that isn't going to our children. So, and I know some of the people in our community send their kids to private schools, but again, just, I don't know the percentage. But anyway, just another item.
All right. Thank you. L2 revised, pre-K private provider contract approval. L3, 24-25 remote learning plan. I guess we're, we have to have that, even though we all hope and pray that we will never have remote learning again. L4, language instruction educational program. L5, student day trips. I was excited to see the ESY classes going to Monster Mini-Golf. That's great. M1, student services as educational placement of pupils, 23-24 revised. M2, school nursing plan. M3, special education independent educational evaluations. And 4, M4, commission for the blind. M5, Wilson Reading and Language Services revised. M6, educational placement of pupils, 24-25. And M7, grant application acceptance of FY25 Federal Fund for Handicap IDEA. And then we're moving on to business, and 1, financial reports, and 2, fire and evacuation drills, and 3, joint transportation agreement with the Lawrence Township Schools. And 4 is the grant Mr. Bolden mentioned, the PSCNG Clean Energy Future Direct Install Award. That's great. HVAC equipment revised. Then we have, and 5, Eastern Data Telecom, JP Cell Repeater Award. So hopefully people at JP, thank you to Dr. Cisso-Stents. If there's an emergency, we'll be able to call out. Let's hope. And 6, bid award proposal, fire alarm prepare, repair time and material for three years, ending June 30th, 2027. Then we have, as Susan mentioned, PHS Athletic Trainer Area Renovation General Carpentry. Then we have, and 8, FBHD Architectural Group Contract Amendment for the playgrounds, and that's using funds from the 23 referendum. And then we have, and 9, registration travel agenda. And now we're moving on to our second public comment. And there's no one from the public here. School district employees, is there anything you would like to discuss? Nothing. Well, we appreciate you commenting, because sometimes it's really hard just to talk to chairs. And usually, this is a very well-attended ticket, so, but not tonight. So there's no one for public comment, so we'll move on to the consent vote. Can I get a, a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Brian, second. Susan?
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Adam Beerman?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed.
Did I get to vote twice?
No, my mic wasn't on the first time.
Okay, got it. All right, because I shouldn't get to vote twice.
You did not get to vote twice. You only get one vote.
Only one vote. Okay, so it's 9:00. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Beth, second. Debbie? All in favor? All right, good night.